Public hearing item we're going to hear is the Hollis Green, the Chiron Park at 53rd Street and Hollis Street. I think first we'll have a presentation from staff and then hear from the applicant.
So that would make this the only item on tonight's agenda.
No.
For the public hearing.
Yeah, other than commission comments.
Right. And then after hearing from staff and the applicant, we'll hear from anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is an FDP for a 30,000 square foot publicly accessible park at the corner of Hollis and 53rd Street. You saw this proposal last month as a, in a study session. So I'm going to briefly go over the main proposal just as a reminder and then also highlight the changes that have been made since then. The use of the park is going to be primarily passive recreation and to this end, the park will be heavily vegetated with adequate hardscape to allow seating. The existing open space at this corner is going to get expanded and you're going to incorporate some additional hardscape with some seating as well as a water feature right here. The main entry way to the park is going to be located right here and the park is going to have an eight-foot fence around the perimeter. Most of the park is going to be planted in turf with a row of, or mass of redwood trees on the two perimeters and with some cherry trees in front. Going over the main changes that the applicant made as a result of some of the comments that they heard at the study session, one is that they have pulled back the fence right here and right here so that earlier the fence went around here and then it came back around here. So that has been pulled to increase the visibility and the second gate has been introduced here with some additional seating areas as well. What else? The maitens will be planted in lieu of the willows that were proposed earlier and the square panel has been reduced in size to increase the open turf area at the pinch point. The applicant has suggested additional language to the conditions of approval. This basically is to be added in the conditions of approval. It basically says that if there is a conflict between the proposed conditions of approval with the conditions of approval of the BTP, the participation agreement and the development agreement, then the conditions of the development agreement, participation agreement and the PDP will take precedence over the conditions in the FDP. This proposed language has been reviewed by the city attorney's office and we do not have a problem including this language to the conditions of approval of the FDP. But this staff would recommend, recommend that it recommend to the city council to approve the FDP to construct this park and in accordance with the development agreement between the city of Emeryville and Chiron. If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
With this change, has staff looked at the issue of inconsistency? I assume you have and that there's no inconsistency. This just raises a question in my mind, why is this additional condition being suggested? If there's no inconsistency and if there is inconsistency, what is it? We should know that now or at least discuss that.
Well, the original PDP has something like 92 conditions of approval that go on for, you know, several hundred pages. And I think Chiron is just concerned that they don't want us to adopt anything at this point that violates any of those conditions. We don't think there is anything that's inconsistent, but in the event that there is, this is just sort of safeguarding language.
I think there's a deviation on hours of work.
I'm saying that.
I believe in Chiron's going to have to answer on this, but I think that there was a deviation on hours of work that were permitted under the PDP as opposed to the FDP and the applicant will have to comment on that.
I believe there was also something about fees. There was a deal worked out with Chiron back when the PDP was approved regarding what, how the mechanism for them paying fees and what their fees would have to be and this may not be 100% consistent with that.
But it's, but is it even relevant though to this, this component of the FDP, the park proposal that we're looking at? I wouldn't see that as relevant.
I think probably hindsight being 20/20, it would have been better to call out most of the conditions and only have those prior ones. We didn't do that and so we're putting in this language to, just to avoid the conflicts.
Okay. Just as long as you don't believe there's an inconsistency.
Other than the hours of work, and I'll leave that to the applicant to comment on, which is what, what I believe Mike Biddle received a message this morning saying that that was one conflict that they had identified, but no, otherwise it shouldn't be a problem at all having this language in there.
I recall when, when the noise ordinance was passed and construction work was limited sort of formally from Monday through Friday. I think it was pointed out that Chiron already has Saturday hours in their existing PDP and that would prevail here. In other words, they would be allowed to work on this park on Saturdays even though these conditions say Monday through Friday.
I had one other question. You mentioned that the fence is eight feet. I was under the impression that the previous proposal was during the study session, I thought it was a six-foot fence we were looking at.
I believe it's always been eight feet. In fact, I remember that because when we met with them, we asked them how tall it was because a fence that's six foot or less doesn't require a building permit.
Right.
And, and they said, oh no, it's taller than that. So that would mean the fence will need a building permit.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, Maru. Any other questions, staff? Applicant, did you want to make a presentation?
My name is Jerry Hookwater with Chiron. The only thing that I would care to address is we received an addendum. We received an addendum just before this session started regarding that, the fence along Hollis Street.
Actually, those are my suggestions and I actually haven't even made them yet.
Oh.
I handed them to staff to take a look at quickly and I guess they filtered all the way to you, so.
We're efficient here.
When, when do you want us to respond to this?
Yeah, now, if you've actually had a chance to review it, although I haven't had a chance to even present the idea yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't you present the application, any changes you've made to it? We'll have the public hearing and then you'll have an opportunity to respond specifically to that or some other suggestion.
Okay. I'd like to make a one-sentence comment first.
Sure.
And that is, we have major objections to removing the fence.
Okay.
Which could substantially change the design. So, I mean, if the, if this amendment is really being proposed seriously, then, and if we are expected to address this and we need to take this off the table and take our design back.
Okay. I guess what then, hearing that, if you could explain again to the commission the reason the fence is there and why it's, it's an eight-foot fence? I, I appreciate the changes that you made primarily in response to some comments that I had with the additional gate and with the adjustments in the frontage. I appreciate those changes. But I'd actually like more information on why the fence is needed at this point without some understanding of a history of problems at that intersection or the relationship of this park and open space to other Chiron facilities and how this may be in fact presumably a security issue. So maybe you could discuss that a little bit.
Okay. The park that we're proposing here is one that was agreed to in 1995 with our overall agreements with the city. And as part of the agreements for this park, it was, the hours of operation were clearly spelled out, separate hours for this from anything else on, on the property.
Right.
We had separate hours for semi-public space throughout our property, which were eight to five, Monday through Friday. This park was treated separately. Hours are eight in the morning till dusk, seven days a week, specifically to allow more public access to this area. And so that's what, in, in 1995, when we went through all these agreements, there were a lot of things that went back and forth on this and then this is where we, we landed on this is that's what we agreed to at that point and so now to rethink this again, it's that we need to take it back and, and look at the design of the park to see how we might change the design of the park if we do not have that fence.
Okay.
That, that fence is important to us.
Any questions?
Yeah, and do we want to respond to the known conflicts that we discussed before?
That was Saturday hour, was that what the difference was?
The hours?
Yes.
The construction hours?
Yes.
Yes. What was?
That was what this sub-verb was about?
Yes, and there were two things. As, as Carol pointed out, one is the fees and the conditions here, they were, you know, talked about standard city fees and so forth and we have special agreements with the city as to what our fees are.
Mm-hmm.
And so we just wanted to make sure that it's clearly understood that's what we would be doing here because I think that's what everybody had agreed to. The other thing is the hours of operation, we are allowed to work on Saturdays, so we just didn't want that taken away. And the noise, we're allowed 90 dB versus 85 and we just didn't want to have that taken away. And I believe also if you look at the development agreement, section 2.4 through 2.8, it really, I think if you read through those sections, it seems to me like the intent is that those are the conditions of approval for these types of things. And, and for something like this, they, those shouldn't be changed. So.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. Any other questions to staff before we open the public hearing? Let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Come on up, state your name and...
Do you want me to represent?
Oh, did, did, did you want to do a presentation before we open the public hearing? Let's close the public hearing and let's actually finish the presentation by the applicant then.
Let's see if I can get this to work. I'm Paul Suron with Peter Walker Partners. I was just going to take us through the same presentation we had before. I think we have some new people here and maybe some new people watching, so we'll try to do it fairly quickly if we can get our PowerPoint to work.
The same as before, but updated for the changes.
Well, it's, it's basically, I mean, Maru went through the, the changes pretty well. I mean, we've pulled the fence back from the corner, we've added another gate. The gates always were double gates, but we've added another one. We've added another picnic platform. We've pulled the square back a little bit to make more lawn area. We showed the code blue station on the last submission. We changed the tree species. We, we had some more information about the location of the water line on Hollis that caused us to pull the street trees back a little bit. They no longer can line up with the streetlights because the streetlights are set on the whole block, right at the curb line and that's impossible for us to plant a tree right there. So, but I mean, those are, we tried to do as much as we could with, with your concerns and they were valid concerns and I think we've addressed almost all of them in a positive way. Again, I'll try to do this very quickly because it is, the, the presentation really is no different than what we did a month ago. The, the park location is at the southwest corner of Hollis and 53rd Street and in the PDP, the, the basic program of the park was spelled out to be a fairly passive park with a lot of vegetation and a water feature. And so that's basically what the design responds to. The context of the park is a very urban area, the buildings are right on the street and the idea was that the park itself would be much of, as much of an oasis and a contrast to that as we could make it. This aerial photograph shows the existing conditions of the park site. The entire area that's on the screen will become the park. The areas that are shaded in green are those elements that are there now that will remain, the stone paving at the corner, the Chiron sign, the bus shelter and the concrete circular wall. The design of the park is on this slide. Again, the idea, as Maru pointed out, is that the, the corner, basically the area of the park right now is, is about this and that area will become all hardscape. There'll be decomposed granite paving added around the circle, some seating there along the fence. There are feature planting areas, three squares here that help the fence turn the corner and provide some seasonal interest, low plantings at the, at those locations. And now the fence is basically running through those, those plant beds instead of being kind of corralled by those. The water feature itself will occur within the circle of the seat wall that's there now. The planting, very quickly, is, is the redwood trees around the border of the property to provide the backdrop, cherry trees in front, mounding up because there is a three-foot grade change from the street level up to the Bee Gees' yard. And then we're adding new street trees along Hollis. Those will extend back into the park with some large maple trees and we'll be replacing all of the street trees on the south side of 53rd Street with the carpinas. And the only change in the trees is basically the willow trees here, we've, we've changed those out to maitens. Again, an elevation of, of the park from, from Hollis Street, detail here showing the circular seat wall with the water feature. The water feature is a mist water feature with stones in it as we had done at Harvard Yard in Cambridge. And the idea is that, that it's a very cooling effect during the day and then at night we hope to light it up and have it be somewhat a little bit mysterious at night. And then just an example of the character of the landforms of the park with the, with the redwoods in the backdrop and the cherry trees in the foreground. Again, examples of the plant material, the cherry trees and the mounding. This is the sycamore trees that will be along Hollis Street, cherry trees, a fairly bad slide of a maitens tree, but it looks kind of like a willow. The native maple trees, which will turn the corner of the park, the redwood trees that are the backdrop of the park and the carpinas that are the street trees on 53rd Street. And then these are examples of how the feature planting beds will be treated. Each one will be a monoculture, but each one will be different and the idea is that we'll try to do something that's maybe 18, 24 inches high and we'll have something going on every season of the year. Difference between the beds even from, from the, something may happen in one bed in March, something in the other one in April, so hopefully throughout the year, there's something happening in, in those three beds. The fence is an eight-foot high fence. It's very similar to the fence at Pixar across the street, an open picket fence. The benches are a wooden bench with the back to it and then some close-up slides of the, of the model. The model's been changed a little bit to move the fence around. And that's it. Thank you very much. If you have any questions for me?
Nope.
Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. With that, let's open the public hearing. Come on up and state your name and there should be a sign-in sheet there, Charlie.
Oh.
If you would sign in.
We sign in after you speak, that's fine.
If we can find the sign-in.
We'll find one.
Sheet.
My name is Barry Harris. I live in the Cohousing Community on Doyle Street and I'm wondering how this park, it's a very nice park it looks like, will affect the potential of a, a bridge over to Bay Street. I don't know who would be able to address that question.
Charlie, you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
This wouldn't have anything to do with the bridge over to Bay Street. You're referring to the bridge over the railroad tracks? That would be a couple of blocks further to the east, to the west, I mean. It's intended to connect kind of along the Temescal Creek corridor between Aloney Way at Bay Street and just south of 53rd Street at Horton. But it really has no relationship to this park.
Well, Charlie, the one, are these on?
Yeah.
One thing that I noticed in the staff report, which was different from our last staff report, was that if the auditorium moves forward, there would be approximately 15,000 feet of the 30,000-foot park that might go away. And my understanding is that if that's the case, Chiron could get credit for that 15,000 square feet by developing the Horton Street Landing Park area. That was my understanding.
Oh, yeah.
In reviewing the, the staff report.
It's actually summarized under item two in the background on page two of the staff report.
Yeah, this is what the city attorney told us is the way the agreement was originally crafted, I think, with Chiron. Do you, Jerry, do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah, could you provide us the answer?
We weren't aware of this at the last study session.
Yes, I mean, the way the staff report is written, that is correct. You know, with the Horton Street Landing Park, when that's developed, we would get credit for that other 15,000 square feet. That's correct. That was, that was part of the conditions of approval for the, when the park was done and the parking structure was done about three years ago.
Anyone, anyone else wishing to comment?
Could the, if you didn't do so, would the speaker please sign in?
Did you sign in?
On the sign-in sheet. It's right there on the corner, the clipboard.
Seeing no one else, let's close the public hearing. Since it was brought up already, I'm going to take the lead here and just explain what my thinking was. I, I went back through the conditions. I guess my gut feeling is this is a park. It's been, it's required as part of the entitlement for the Chiron development and I understand the concerns for security, but my, my feeling is this is a park and it, it needs to be an open visually and during appropriate times physically to the community. And I understand also in reading through the excerpts from the conditions that the only reference to the park are limitations on hours that it is open. And I've seen lots of parks that have very simple signage at important points along the frontage that inform people who are using the park what the hours of operation are and if somebody's in that space when they're not supposed to be there, they're informed by the security or the police. And especially in urban areas like, dense urban areas like San Francisco, where you have a park like this, the last effort to control severe problems with drug dealing or homelessness or vagrancy in a space like this is you fence that park, whether it's on private land or public, where there's a required public access. But it's always the last step that's taken in, in a park. And my concern is that we don't have enough parks in Emeryville and I think that this, the security issues around this location, especially given the fact that you do have a security guard out there 24 hours a day, or at least it appears that way to me as I drive by right across the street and I look at the fact that 53rd Street separates this park from your facilities themselves. So I, in my mind, I don't see a, a large risk of, of a bomber or some other potential security hazard there. And what I did with this draft language, there are actually two conditions that I suggested changing, one with regard to condition one, building plans and elevations. Again, I appreciate the changes you made to the fence outline here, the additional gate and improvements to the seating. But what I'd like this to show is the, the last step if in fact there are problems that you experience with this park and that those problems be demonstrated before the fence goes up. I don't have a problem with the fence location if you need to put in an eight-foot fence to secure this area because you have a problem. But in my mind, we shouldn't be planning the city around a potential problem, especially one that excludes a visual and, and physical invitation into the limited open space that we have. The second suggested change was an additional condition eight for, regarding fencing and gating improvements and it reads, "Fencing and gating on the Hollis Street and 53rd Street frontages of the site shall not be installed unless it is demonstrated that the area must be secured at night because of excessive vagrancy, trespass violations or other demonstrated security issues. Evidence shall be provided demonstrating repeated and excessive problems warranting installation of the proposed fencing and gating. Fencing and gating shall only be installed after review by staff and planning commission and approval by the city council." And I, I guess I'd just like to remind my fellow commissioners that all we're doing here is a recommendation to the council. We're not approving this. And I just, I think it's important that at least the council here, even if this applicant chooses to appeal to the council and object further to this fencing, I just think it's critical that the council hears from the planning commission that fencing a park, in my mind anyway, and hopefully the majority of the commission, is not an appropriate first step in addressing a potential problem. It's, it's an appropriate step in addressing a real problem, but not a potential problem. That's my explanation for, for why I put this draft suggestion together.
So, my, you know, I, I'm, I'm very mixed on this, but, but I'm not sure what we have agreed to back 10 years ago in terms of, is, is it implicit that there, with the hours of operation, does that imply the ability to lock out the public? Now, the other part about this, on the other side, is that this is going to be maintained by Chiron and they're, they're, they are providing access to the public. So, you know, we're not, it's not like there, it's, it's a, a park that's not accessible and it's not beautiful and there is a plant that has, that has to be protected. So, you know, I, I'm very conflicted about this, but again, I think where, where, where does this, what is the verbiage in, in the agreement back 10 years ago really sort of imply or direct?
I don't know for sure, but I don't think it explicitly says anything about a fence. I think it says that she'll be a park owned by Chiron and operated, you know, for the benefit of the public or something like that.
Actually, in the previous staff report, Maru, there, you had the quoted language. If you have a copy of the previous staff report study session, you actually quoted in there the excerpt from the condition. I noticed it wasn't carried forward in this current staff report, but if you have the previous staff report, there's actually quotes to that condition there that you summarized.
You know, I'm not sure if that was the only condition that...
Unless there is another condition.
Yeah, that was my, my concern.
And maybe while you're looking for that, if you actually have it, the other point I wanted to make is beyond again that I think this is going to be a wonderful park, that Chiron has considerable frontage on its private property all along Hollis Street. The, the alley, the poplar alley, the lawns, the hedging, all of that is on the street side of the existing fencing where the 200-foot tower is going to go. So there is a, there is a precedent set by the existing development that actually has Chiron responsible for that frontage as well. So that, in my mind, isn't, this is not unusual to, to have then continued to maintain this property. And it, if this moves forward and fencing is used as a last resort, I understand the importance of signage that people who are going to be using this park in the evening and, and prohibited from using it at night need to be informed of that. So there would have to be some signage along the frontage at key points so that people in that space know they're not supposed to be there if it's after dark.
Yeah, definitely.
But you know, the marina has signage that says that you're not supposed to be there after dark. That doesn't stop people from going there after dark.
Right. But it does give the city the authority to go and control it if there is a problem. And that's basically what the signage is for.
Except, except the city doesn't, doesn't do that.
Yeah.
I, I am really not at all bothered by the fence and I think that, you know, Chiron has been a really good citizen in this town for a long time and if, for them, this works, it says it's open during the daytime and then it does, it gets closed. I don't really see any problem because the fence is certainly very nicely disguised and hidden by trees and I, you know, I don't want to revisit Pixar and the fence here. I know I didn't mean to throw that in, but I couldn't resist. So I'm really not bothered by it. I think that people don't listen and don't read signs, but if they can't get in, they can't get in. You know, so the fence, having the fence there just, you know, enforces that.
But Jim's conditions are identifying sort of a phased approach to sort of give the community, the benefit of the doubt and establish a park that's welcoming and with posted signage. If people don't behave and there are problems, then there is a mechanism to install a fence.
Yeah, and people will behave, of course, right?
Yeah, and I would, I'd like to hear from Chiron again what, what... Yeah, and I'd like to hear from Chiron again what, what the overriding idea about the fence was. What was your thought about it, bringing the fence on this?
If there are specific safety issues that you face that we're unaware of that have driven this fence in particular.
Well, we were going back to the agreement from nineteen ninety-five where it just talked about the hours of operation. And to us, the only way to keep people out and to respect those hours is with a fence. Otherwise, it doesn't work. We have had other issues on campus with our fountain and so forth, where our security guards have had to go in and remove people, you know, from our different areas on the site.
So you've already had.
We've had issues on site. Yes, we have.
That's important information.
Okay. And, and I mean, I just, I appreciate what you're saying about the, and I've seen them also, the signs and so forth, but we do not believe that that will work here. So, and that's why, you know, ten years ago, we really worked on the hours of operation of what we would do. And the only way for us to enforce that is, is through the use of a fence.
Any luck finding those, that particular condition excerpt?
We found, nothing specifically about a fence. And in fact, nothing that specifically says.
It was about the hours of operation.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think there is a fence reference.
Yeah, okay. It says, "There are various conditions of approval that touch on this park and auditorium." And those are conditions fourteen, twenty-eight, thirty-four, forty-eight, fifty-four, and ninety. Condition number twenty-eight provides that the park at the corner of 53rd Street and Hollis Street shall be open from eight AM to sunset seven days a week."
Right.
Is that what you're thinking of?
Right.
Well, based on what I just heard, and Dave already had the experience, and we had the unfortunate situation before too, so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the fence being, since it is close to what Pixar is now, and the fact that you are opening it up to the public, which I think is a really good asset, and the fact that you are, with it being closed off, you can, my concern has always been the vandalism and graffiti that typically happens to open spaces, even closed spaces such as our Fallujah and Flecto. So with that, with that in mind, with your experience, which is what I was trying to get at, yeah, I think the fence, I could go for the fence.
Can I make a couple of comments? I just want to let the commission know that the landscape architecture firm that designed the park is the same firm that I was employed by three years ago. I do not need to technically recuse myself from the, from speaking on it, and I feel like I can make an unbiased opinion, so I just want to make sure that it's okay with the rest of the commission.
Carol.
And Carol, that, that's, that this is, these are the conditions under which I'm speaking, if that's all right with you.
You're no longer benefiting financially from that, are you? So you can make your comments.
That's correct. A couple of thoughts. One is that I really, I completely appreciate, Jim, what you're saying, actually, and I think it's really true that there's a message that needs to be transmitted to the city council. I think there's, there's a couple of things. One is that the park isn't only just what's green in this case. In fact, there really are no other street trees along Hollis, and it will be only when you reach this point along Hollis that street trees appear. You get these beds actually, you know, reaching out from behind the fence. And that the fountain out front, which is currently still a part of the improved section of Hollis that belongs visually to Chiron, I think that that fountain is going to belong less to Chiron than it is going to belong visually to the new park. And so, and when I look at this, I actually think the fence appears to run through the park, not around the park, around the open space. So in a sense, it seems to me that there is, there's a large chunk of this which is completely in the public domain. And it's only the green, more secluded, less visually accessible areas that are in the inside of the fence. That's the first point. And in that case, I think that the fence starts to make some sense. There's two other points I wanted to make. One is that a fence can actually help, in this case, those on the inside of the park feel more secure and actually have a more relaxed experience of being in a park. And then the second thought I had was the Pixar fence. It's got to be, I think, one of the most dramatic seasonal events in all of Emeryville is that Pixar fence with the roses on it. And in that case, that, to me, yes, it's a fence, but it's one of the most beautiful, amazing things that happens. In this case, there's, I don't think there's any planting that's along the fence, and in that case, it would still be fairly open. So hopefully those beds, these three beds that the fence kind of cuts through will have that same sort of appeal that the roses along the Pixar fence have for us. And I think we'll start to make that fence disappear in a way. If this was less of a, in other words, I think if, I would, I would completely agree with Commissioner Martin, if this fence ran all the way around the outside, but currently it doesn't. And I also think that it still is a private park that we're allowing public access to rather than a public park. And that, in that case, the fence is appropriate.
Anyone else?
I think pretty much where I am on that goes a lot to what Commissioner Brooke was just saying, that to me, it feels, you know, although, you know, having lived in, you know, in San Francisco City that has a significant number of parks that have exactly those kinds of signs that restrict, but that don't necessarily wall off, I'm certainly familiar with that. I look at this though, and I, you know, and I think of the, you know, the redwood grove and the cherry trees and the dense planting back there and get it that, you know, it could, you know, it could be a security problem. And this is in fact a private park. And I think that the idea of opening, of leaving, I didn't figure out the percentage of it, but it looks like it's probably, you know, a good fifteen, twenty percent of it open twenty-four hours is, is at least helpful. On the other, you know, on the other side of, you know, the respect question, I would point out that there has been a public art installation under the freeway with a very tempting, very large blue wall for a significant number of months and has yet to have its first graffiti tag. So can people respect an open, open space? I believe they can.
The gray has been tagged, though.
The gray has been tagged?
Yeah, a few times.
Okay, I haven't, I hadn't seen that, but certainly, you know, large expanses of blue haven't, and the sculptures themselves, to the best of my knowledge, have not. So I do, I do, you know, have perhaps a little bit more hope for public respect than, you know, than a complete nihilistic approach or view on that. You know, it would be nice to have it open, but I think, I think the reality is that, yes, it is a public space and a part of it will be open twenty-four hours and a part of it will be open for a substantial period of the day. You know, maybe, you know, something, well, of course, I was going to say maybe, you know, something longer than sunset, but I also recognize that those are in conditions of approval, now that I think about it, that date back to nineteen ninety-five. So there's probably little, little if any that we could do about extending the hours to some kind of a compromise. You know, I'm not, I'm not bothered enough by the fence to not move forward, although, you know, it would be probably, in a perfect world, it would be nice not to have to have it.
Maru, Patty?
I have no objections to a fence.
Patty?
I think the park design is beautiful, and I commend you for such a creative design, and I think it'll be a real asset for the city. But I have some concerns about the fence. And I don't feel that it is going to be as inviting during the daytime. You're walking by and it's gated, basically. I mean, physically, you can have access, it's controlled access. And when you're walking or driving along Hollis, for example, when you're looking at it obliquely, it's going to look sort of like a solid, blackish-gray wall. When you're looking at it straight on, you can look through, but there will be this barrier, this visual barrier that a pedestrian and occupants of a vehicle will experience when they're driving by there. And I recognize the security concerns, the potential for vandalism, but I would really hope that we could, we could try an open approach, and then if there are problems, then we look at a gate and a fence. And I would, I would support Jim's conditions.
Any other comments? I just, one other thing I think that I hadn't pointed out, and Patty made a very good point, especially if we, and I don't think it will have roses on it because of the security issue, where you're going to want to see into that fence. The Pixar fence without the roses is not attractive. It's an eight-foot, and it does appear as a solid fence as you move down park or Hollis. It appears as a solid fence. It's only when you look at it perpendicularly from the road, straight in, can you see into that compound. And it just really bothers me. It's very subtle in the model there, but, you know, we're looking at another, fencing another area there, and I just, Patty, I appreciate you pointing out, and reminding me anyway, what that really looks like as you move down either the sidewalk or the road. And I just, you know, my impression is it's going to be unfortunate to have that fence from the start. So with that, do we have a motion?
Well, I move.
And this is, this is actually a motion to recommend to the, to the city council. It's not an approval.
Correct.
I move that we recommend to the city council Resolution FDP-0501 as submitted with the fencing.
I second.
And is that with the amendment to the conditions as proposed by Chiron?
Yes.
Yes, that particular one. Thank you. So amended.
So motion by Chris and second by Joe.
So I take it you're not going to vote on your proposed conditions then? I mean, assuming, or you're not going to.
I'm not substituting.
You're not going to do a substitute motion?
I think we need to do a roll call on the recommendation.
Absolutely. You can, yes. Just want to be clear.
Thanks, Charlie.
What the procedure is here.
I didn't hear a substitute coming in.
All right. I just, you know, if this motion passes, then there's no substitute motion.
Right.
Okay. Here we go. Commissioner.
Charlie, I already know what's going to happen, geez.
Charlie, we all can count.
All right. Maybe I don't need to call the roll. I'm just writing down the votes.
Call our all.
Commissioner Brooke.
Aye.
Commissioner Kane.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutz.
Aye.
Commissioner Owens.
Aye.
Commissioner Freuding.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jeffrey.
No.
Chair Martin.
No.
Five ayes, two noes, the motion is approved. We will move this project forward to the city council with the recommendation of the commission, without the fence. I mean, with the fence, sorry.
Okay.
Without the condition about the fence.
I like that, Charlie.
Freudian slip.
And it is a wonderful design. I have to make it clear to the applicant, it's a wonderful design. You know, again, my concern is that we deal with issues and steps, and I just felt like this was something we need to reconsider. And I tried, so.
And you keep on doing that.
No offense taken.
No, no.
Me or you, Joe? Okay. So the study.